So, welcome to the Winslow Township Board of Education's regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, March eighth, twenty twenty-three. Open notice of this meeting was given to all board members and associates in the notice dated January thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Adequate and electronic notice of this public meeting has been provided specified the time, place, and manner in which this meeting is being conducted. It was advertised in the Courier-Post, posted in all schools, the administration office, the municipal building, the library, the Bud Doodle Center, Edwin Acres Film Town, and the Winslow Township Board's offices. And this, ladies and gentlemen, is our mission statement. The mission of the Winslow Township School District to large, diverse, and growing communities is to educate all students to become independent lifelong learners, critical thinkers, and caring and confident members of their community. The district, in partnership with the community and in the climate of cooperation and mutual respect, will provide an academic environment which values excellence and diversity, encourage students, provide, encourage us, I'm sorry, students to strive for personal excellence and assist them in acquiring the knowledge, skills, and attitudes necessary to contribute positively to a rapidly changing world. Roll call, please.
Ms. Drede, here. Ms. Esposito, here. Ms. Martin?
Present.
Ms. Moore?
Present.
Ms. Niavas?
Present.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Ms. Thomas?
Ms. Thomas will have a joining us this evening.
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Peterson?
Present.
And Ms. Pitts?
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you, Ms. Paul. Can we now stand for the first question?
I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Twenty-two, twenty-three district goals. One, student achievement. Continue to implement best practice for delivering instruction to students utilizing all available and appropriate instructional mode. This shall include: A) Ensuring articulation at all grade levels throughout the district. B) Focus on innovative classroom instructions at all grade levels. C) Ensuring all students have equal access to equipment and resources needed to facilitate and promote student learning in any setting. D) Evaluating evaluations and updating all district programs, including athletic and extracurricular activities. E) Accountability of all district staff. Two, continue to foster a safe and positive school environment that is conducive to teaching and learning. A) Focus on building relationships among staff and families that will result in increased learning and more effective instruction. One, promote communication and feedback opportunities. B) Emphasis on collaboration with all district stakeholders. C) Promote an inclusive, diverse, and compassionate learning environment. Three, market our strengths and achievements to all stakeholders to increase capacity for greater parent caregiver community support. A) Continue with our public relations marketing plan. B) Continue to work with the advisory committees in the district. C) Focus on refining our communication method to better market our school district.
Thank you, Ms. Drede. Moving now, board members, page two, awards and presentations. Madam President, we do not have any awards or presentations this evening. Thank you, Dr. Ponte. Correspondents, would there be any correspondence at this time?
Madam President, we have no correspondence at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Paul. Moving now to our minutes. Board members, at this time, I'm asking for a motion to approve the minutes from our regular meeting that was held Wednesday, February twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, open session, and our regular meeting held Wednesday, February twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, closed session. Is your motion?
Motion to approve meeting minutes from our regular meeting Wednesday, February twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, open and closed session.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Niavas, second by Ms. Moore. Ms. Moore, would there be any comments or questions? Hearing on roll call, please.
Sorry, Madam President, I'm getting used to the mic.
I know. So, I want to do my part.
Ms. Drede?
Yes.
Ms. Esposito?
Present.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Niavas?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
And Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
The motion has carried.
Thank you, Ms. Paul. Moving now to our board committee reports. If you will notice, our student representative is absent this evening, so we will just proceed with our regular committee board reports. Would there be a report out of our athletic committee?
None at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Would there be a report out of our education committee?
None at this time, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Would there be a report out of our operations committee?
None at this time, Madam President.
Thank you. Would there be reports out of our marketing committee?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Paul?
Just hit the white button once.
I got it. Yeah, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
The marketing committee met on February twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, at three P M via Zoom. Present were Rebecca Niavas, Joseph Thomas, Dion Davis, and myself. Our next meeting will be March twenty-second at three P M via Zoom. Black History Month. Ms. Niavas coordinated with Ms. McCrary to provide information on the district's website and Facebook page about what each school was concentrating on during Black History Month. This included curriculum, performances, and projects. Women's History Month. We will research and provide information to the district about women who made significant contributions to education. Town Hall Meeting. The next town hall meeting is scheduled for next week, three fifteen, twenty-three. The topic is mental health and social emotional learning. We need to advertise this in many outlets, including the district website, Facebook, Nextdoor, community calendars, the TV stations, and news papers. We want to fill the room for this important presentation. Google Analytics. Mr. Davis reported on the information he gathered in response to Ms. Niavas's request. The information provided may be skewed due to the teachers using the website for every day. He will check the webpages of the individual schools to try to get a better idea of the traffic generated by parents and other non-staff members. We also discussed needing a better way to access the data. Strategic Marketing Plan. We reviewed the existing plan and agreed that overall it is a sound plan that needs to be updated and implemented. This will require the assistance of Dr. Ponte and the administration. We will schedule a meeting in the near future. The Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. Mr. Davis reported that the DEI committee would like to collaborate with the marketing committee for Winslow Family Day. It was suggested that two members from each committee meet to discuss this effort. That's because we can't all meet at one time. Mr. Thomas would like to be one of the representatives of the marketing committee. Ms. Moore will reach out to Ms. Thomas to discuss this matter. The meeting ended at four oh one P M, submitted by myself.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Very comprehensive. Any comments or questions on that report?
Madam President, I may just want to add some information items, concern on athletics.
Yes, Mrs. Thomas.
First of all, earlier, our cheerleaders gave a, uh, our cheerleaders gave a, uh, award to the A.D. Lisa Steele for National Women's Day. Uh, also, our Winslow Athletic Youth Seventh Grade Basketball Team wins the state championship. They won it last Saturday at Cherokee, and that's our youth seventh graders who won that championship. Our freshman, long jumper, was named All-South Jersey with seventeen-three. And she was also named, uh, number one in the fifty-five meter hurdles at eight point six-six. The only freshman long jumper. We had another freshman long jumper, Shatina Walker. She was tied with, uh, Ms. Brenner for that, for that title for number one uh, in the ninth grade freshman group for long jumpers. Uh, Dominic Bassi, sophomore, broke Winslow record of eight hundred meters at one minute fifty-six sixty-six seconds, and I know that record was there since nineteen ninety-five, held by Mr. Eric James. So, he's looking good to break the outdoor record as well at that hundred meters. And we had Jalen Wall. He was eighth in the meter champions of the fifty-five meter hurdles with a two point nine, with a nine point eight-five. Now, also, the indoor track team, their GPA is two point nine as a team. The, uh, indoor track team is three point nine GPA as a team, and the cheerleaders are three point oh as a team, but it doesn't end there. Congrats to Coach Handy and the season's success with Winslow Women's Basketball. We had four all-conference players. Senior Hope Godwin, number one, first team. Senior Katrina Skyball, if I'm saying the name wrong, I apologize. Second team. Alexander Junior, second team. And freshman, uh, I don't know, L A B R E Y A, uh, second team as well. And their GPA is three point two as a team. One more.
One more.
Wrestling, wrestling. Hundred and fifty five, hundred and fifty pound Xavier Harvey placed second in District Thirty. Jeremiah Lewis placed second in District Thirty, and their GPA as a team is three point two-six, and that concludes my information.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. That's good news. That's all good news. Okay, thank you. Uh, would there be a report out of our Citizens Advisory Committee? Oh, the report is going to be made from one of the members?
Yes.
Good evening, my name is Wanda Godd, and I'm on the Citizens Advisory Committee. Um, we held our meeting on March second. The meeting of the Citizens Advisory Council began at seven P M. Attending members included a group from the board, Rita Martin, Debbie Esposito, from the community, it was Martha Tommasello, Rosemary Hoffman, Diane McKenzie, Wanda Godd, Caroline Carter, Tumish Gregory, Wake, Anthony Mitchell, and Carla Ortiz. Um, we opened up the meeting with a pleasant leagance, and Ms. Martin said an agenda which is deeply, which included the need to appoint a CAC care person. Um, discussions were held for, between parent involvement and parent engagement and recommendations needed to be made to the Board of Education. During our meeting, many topics were discussed in depth, including America Corps, visitor volunteer, and how specific reading programs could benefit our students in the district, sharing kindness to each other in schools and in our community, reasons for students' underachievement, and how to recognize solutions. Community groups which support students after school, and the need to better publicize the school's programs to parents and students, and the necessity of really hearing the students' voices. And ideas on how we can foster that connection is by making students and parents, by meeting students and parents where they are and asking them um, how they see their current goals for an open conversation during our district town hall meetings. Student Denounces. In conjunction with these ideas, a student denounces type day was discussed for proposal. Pros and cons were heard by the group, and a tentative action plan was proposed. Climate Benchmarks. It was decided by each CAC member. We will review newly developed Department of Education's Culture and Climate format and survey to determine if the instrument will be useful in giving voices to our students, the faculty, and the community needs. That topic will be discussed at the next meeting, and then formulated subgroups at the next meeting so that more efficient work can be progressed and more progress within the monthly meeting was discussed and tabled until the next meeting. Wanda Christie, Rosalie, and Wanda Godd were chosen, chosen by the current CAC group as the co-chiefters for the CAC committee, and Rosemary Hoffman will act as our secretary. And there are no formal recommendations of the committee to the board at this time, and thank you for your time.
Well, thank you, Ms. Paul.
You're welcome.
Very comprehensive. With regards to the policy committee, there are no new policies that we would, um, need to discuss at least this month. However, to the, to the members, if indeed there should be a need to call a quick policy committee meeting, I will certainly inform you. Board members, at this time, I'm asking for a motion to approve the superintendent's report. I'm still on page two. That begins at the middle of page two and continues to the top of page six. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the superintendent's report as it appears on the middle of page two through to page six.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Niavas, second by Ms. Moore. Would there be any further comments or questions? Hearing on roll call, please.
Ms. Drede?
Yes.
Ms. Esposito?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Niavas?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
And Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
The motion has carried.
Thank you, Ms. Paul. Moving now, board members, I'm asking for a motion at this time to approve the Business Administrator's Board Secretary's report as it appears at the middle of page six and continues through to the bottom of page nine. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the Business Administrator's Board Secretary's report beginning on page six.
Nine.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Niavas, second by Ms. Moore. Would there be any further comments or questions? Hearing on roll call, please.
Ms. Drede?
Yes.
Ms. Esposito? Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Uh, yes, except I abstain from item number eleven on page seven.
Ms. Niavas?
Yes, except I also need to abstain from item number twelve on page eight.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
And Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Thank you, Ms. Paul. Moving now, board members, I'm at the top of page ten. I'm asking for a motion to approve the personnel report as it appears on top of page ten and continues through to the bottom of page twelve. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the personnel report as it appears on page ten to the bottom of page twelve.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Niavas, second by Ms. Moore. Would there be further comments or questions? Hearing on roll call, please.
Ms. Drede?
Yes.
Ms. Esposito? Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Niavas?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
And Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Thank you, Ms. Paul. Board members, at this time, we're moving on to page thirteen, our agenda, and it's the big little pink sheet that we usually have. And, uh, I'm so certain that we've had an opportunity to read it, so therefore, at this time, board members, I'm asking for a motion to approve the personnel report as it appears on our agenda.
Motion to approve the personnel report as it appears on our agenda.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Niavas, second by Ms. Moore. Any further comments or questions? Hearing on roll call, please.
Ms. Drede?
Yes.
Ms. Esposito?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Niavas?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
And Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
The motion has carried.
Thank you, Ms. Paul. Moving now, board members, to the open public record, request?
Yes, ma'am. Madam President, between the period of February seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, and March second, we received several, um, requests. The first one was from Paul Tenter, guest from the industry and labor compliance. He requested documents related to purchase orders uh, from leading construction, P O number two oh three oh seven five and P O two oh five eight seven no for each one of the original programs. They received a purchase order that was supplied to the vendor, copies of Paul's submitted, proof of payment that the vendor, the district paid the vendor, and all certified payroll records submitted. For the first, um, request, all of those documents were supplied. For the second one, two oh five eight seven no, everything was supplied with the exception of change orders. There were no change orders to date, and there were no certified payrolls uh, submitted to date for that request. Uh, we also received a request from Mr. Thomas. He wanted the content that was discussed by parents during the last board meeting and grades one through twelve social studies and history curriculum. All the curriculum, curriculum documents were compiled and supplied. And we received another report from Melanie Burney, some education reporter with, um, Philadelphia Inquirer, and she wanted data on in and out of school suspensions for the year of twenty-two, twenty-three, and also for the high schools specifically. She was looking for the reason for the suspension, and she also wanted those records for twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Those records were supplied, um, to fulfill that request.
Thank you, Ms. Paul. Moving now, board, uh, board, before I go any further, I, um, protocol requires, I think I saw him come in. At least I thought I saw him come in. Councilman, Mr. Ray Watkins?
Yeah, he was.
He came in and he left?
He came in and he left.
Well, okay, we can still open in his absence. Moving now, board members, to information items. Dr. Ponte?
Yes, Madam President. Members of the board, here we do have two information items this evening. Um, the school district was contacted by the New Jersey Department of Education Office of Comprehensive Support, informing us that we have two schools that are in need of comprehensive or targeted support and improvement for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. School one identified as a comprehensive support and improvement where they looked at test scores pre-COVID to post-COVID, and they saw that there was no measurable gain, uh, as a school, so therefore, they were identified as a comprehensive support and improvement. School six was identified as a targeted support and improvement. Uh, there was a low performing student group, and it appears to be the subgroup of two or more races. Uh, the state will be providing us with additional information in the weeks to come. Uh, we still gathering information, sharing, uh, information between the two entities. Uh, this is relatively new, uh, through this, uh, Department of Comprehensive, uh, Support. School one will receive twenty-two thousand dollars, um, and school six will receive ten thousand dollars. Um, and also, through the Office of Comprehensive Support, one person, uh, will be assigned to each building, and that person will be providing resources as well as technical assistance to the staff. Um, we're not sure at this time how that's all going to look. We'll be working with the building principals of each building as well as their, their staff, and as we get more information, we will provide more information to the school district. Uh, this does not have anything to do with our Q S A report or the district's outcome, so this is something totally different, and these services, of course, will not begin until we give them that screen. Okay? Any questions or, at this time? My next, um, information item, last but not least, and it has been mentioned and advertised for the past month. We will be having our second, uh, town hall meeting next Wednesday, uh, March fifteenth. Uh, we are asking everyone to come out and take advantage of the information that will be shared. Dr. Cara Ieva, uh, she is a professor from Rowan, Rowan University. Mental health, of course, is a main topic, uh, not only within the school district but in society, and most people, uh, don't necessarily understand what social emotional learning is. Uh, she is an excellent presenter. She'll be providing that information to the parents so that they can use some of the techniques that she'll be sharing at home for their children. So, again, we're asking everyone, if they have an opportunity, please come out and, uh, partake in that town hall meeting. Madam President, that concludes my information items for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Ponte. And it appears that, but, board members have no additional questions. We're moving now to old business. And, board members, at this time, I want to remind us about our board self-evaluation, and you know that we normally should have a discussion, and so I would ask that you would think about that and let me know exactly when you would like to conduct, um, that discussion because we at least have time because that, uh, has to be done early or maybe end of this calendar year. So, if you would, um, just make a decision as to, as you begin to do it, as, as with regards to when you would want to, as a board, have a discussion about that board self-evaluation. Uh, also, I would like to remind us that as board members, we are required to complete our financial disclosure statement. The deadline is coming up. The deadline is April thirtieth, and I do believe that we all received that email uh, from Ms. Paul's office, if not somehow is, perhaps has been misplaced, just, uh, contact Ms. Paul's office. But again, board members, we are required to complete that disclosure statement uh, by April thirtieth. With regards to the town hall meeting, you and her Dr. Ponte speak about the town hall meeting. Uh, board members, uh, have been asked by our, um, business administrator that that meeting, while it's advertised to begin at seven o'clock, if we could change that to six thirty because there is an issue as it relates to the budget, and we, uh, are on a deadline, and so therefore, if we could have that brief discussion, open up our board meeting at six thirty, have that discussion, have that vote, and then we can continue with the, uh, town hall meeting at seven. Um, any questions or comments about that, board members?
Madam President, would it be possible to treat it as two separate meetings because the town hall has already been advertised at seven o'clock?
Right.
There's no action to be taken?
Right.
This could be six thirty will be done prior to seven, seven. And, um, that way there will be action taken because, um, presumably we will pass to the board.
That's absolutely, absolutely permitted. To have, make that a separate and distinct meeting.
That is, right, that is not a problem.
Go on a special meeting at six thirty on that date purposes of reviewing the budget and considering whatever action may be taken. Right, this is Paul?
Yes.
Okay, because we, we are currently publicly advertising. The board members, any question about how that's going to go next one through March fifteenth? Everybody's clear?
Well, we have a call.
Right.
So, are the board members available at six thirty?
Okay, Ms. Paul? Six thirty, please.
Six thirty. Thank you.
One other, um, issue under, uh, old business. We, um, as a board, we talked, uh, at our last meeting about the Spring Musical, and we said that we would put an ad in the papers, and I think, um, that, uh, the ad that we're going to put in, I know we've got a copy of it, but I'll just hold it up and give special thanks to Ms. Niavas because I think she's the one that kind of put this one together, and I would like to say that, Ms. Niavas, not only is this informative, not only is it congratulatory, and I think those are, that, uh, this is a great time to take advantage of this opportunity. So, when you see the, um, program profile, you'll see the boards. Can I see this?
Yes, yes, yes.
You'll see the boards, um, ad in that booklet. Okay? Okay. One last item, board members, with regards to Old Business, the, and our last board meeting, we talked about the New Jersey Public Relations Association and about having a speaker to come in so that we could consider whether or not we would want to take advantage of that service as it relates to our being able to get the good word out about what we do. And I believe that we all can see some information from Ms. Niavitz. And at this time, board members, I'm asking, because of the scheduling conflicts that some of the speakers have, I'm going to ask the board, Dr. Potte, if it's possible that we could have that speaker in perhaps the first meeting in April. Ms. Niavitz, would that be, is that?
Yes.
Is it possible that we would be able to have that speaker to come in to do a presentation, Dr. Potte?
Yes, we have already contacted the speaker.
Okay.
And we have made arrangements to have her zoomed into this office.
Okay.
Excuse me, into this conference room, and we'll be able to interact with that individual during that time. So the first meeting in April is good for us.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Potte. Now, board members, will there be any other Old Business that we would care to discuss at this time?
Ms. Pitts, just to add to the last P R I. So I was in contact with the Vice President of the N G S P R I. She's the one that's doing the presentation. She did send me a PDF of information that's kind of like standard information. I'll be sending that out to the board members. So if there's any other additional questions that we may want to prepare ahead of time for her, if she can insert our presentation, just send them to me and others possibly.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Niavitz. Moving now, board members, would there be any, that's Old Business, any new business that you would care to discuss at this time, Dr. Potte?
I just have a question. Board members, did you receive tickets for the play in your front folders tonight?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, okay. Since you mentioned the play out there, but Mrs. Curry is much better than I am at that sort of thing. So I just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Moving now, again, board members, any additional?
Madam President, I believe I do have some informational items. I will make sure that the parents and the youth are well aware of, just informational items.
Okay, Mr. Thomas.
Okay. Just to remind everybody, the Lewis Bay Municipal Leadership Scholarship, that's all due by the February tenth. If you're thinking about doing that, make sure you get that in.
Okay, excuse me, Mr. Thomas, could you just repeat that a little slower?
Lewis Bay Second Fuser Municipal Leader Scholarship Competition.
Okay.
Advocations are doing attempts. So if you're thinking about doing that, get that in. We also, Winslow Township is also having a job fair on April first. So any high school seniors that are interested or looking to start a new career. I know they will have the Board of Elections Day, they will have Winslow Township Police Department, Fire Department. Good opportunity for some of our youths to go there and see what job skills will be available upon their graduation. Also, on the twenty-fifth, there's an Easter egg hunt. For if you want to go and bring your youth or your kids or your family to the Easter egg hunt. As that kind of memorial park, and once again, that's a good opportunity. And on March twenty-second, there's the Future Chef National Competition right here in the middle school at five P M. Before the school, whether anybody want to come and taste test. I will be a guest judge. And that'll be on March twenty-second, right here at the middle school, future competition. That's all for my informational action items.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Moving now, board members, that concludes that. We can now move to our public comments, panel.
Thank you, Madam President. Public comments. The Winslow Township Board of Education highly values the input of citizens in making important decisions that affect the children of our community. We believe in the rights of citizens to observe board meetings, to ensure that all of our citizens have the opportunity to attend school board meetings, and offer citizen comment, and to ensure that the board can conduct the important business of the district. We ask that the speakers follow the guidelines for making public comment. The Board Secretary will recognize those individuals in the audience who wish to make comment. Please respect the following procedures. One, all members of the public attending school board meetings must treat each other and the board with respect. Two, please state your name, full name and address. Three, please limit your comments to four minutes. Four, in event we're unable to answer your question, please submit your name, address, and telephone number where you can be contacted. Your questions will be answered within a reasonable timeframe. Five, individuals offering citizens comment are not permitted to make personal attacks on any district employee, board member, or other testifier or member of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Board members, at this time, I'm asking for a motion to approve our entering into public comment.
Motion to approve entering into public comments.
Second.
Move by Ms. Niavitz, second by Ms. Moore. All in favor?
Aye.
Any names? Thank you, Ms. Boil.
Mr. Dave Renn?
Good evening. Mrs. Pitts, Ms. Peterson, Ms. Drennan, Ms. Esposito, Ms. Martin, Ms. Moore, Ms. Niavitz, Mr. Thomas, Dr. Potte, Ms. McCloy Boyle, Dr. Carcamo, Mr. Davis, and Mr. Long. And I'm sure Maya Sharp is very disappointed that she is not here tonight as she sits in my first period A P government class and she had the opportunity to grade Mr. Renn tonight. My name is Dave Renn, and I am the president of the Winslow Township Education Association. The Winslow Township Education Association is the collective bargaining agent for five hundred eighty-one bus drivers, bus mechanics, secretaries, and certified staff. During the June nineteen, two thousand twenty, and two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school years, we worked under less than ideal conditions during the COVID pandemic. Members had to learn new technologies and new techniques to complete jobs that didn't work in years. We may certainly have complained to our colleagues, friends, and family, but needless to say, we rolled up our shirt sleeves and got to work and got the job done. As my wife watched me interact virtually with my students, she was amazed at all the hard work I was doing. As a retired teacher, she certainly was a good judge of the amount of work I was doing. I was only one member. There were almost six hundred others working just as hard as myself or even harder. Our current contract expired June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. We were working nine months, two hundred and forty-four days under an expired contract. Almost half of the membership have not received a raise since September first, two thousand and twenty-one, almost one and a half years ago. During this time, the members of the Winslow Township Education Association have faced an inflation rate of six percent. One just has to look at the price of eggs to see the impact on our pockets and on our families. Today, I went to fill up my gas tank. The price of gas had increased almost fifteen cents a gallon from the week before. Interest rates are rising. Federal Chairman Jerome Powell suggested in recent testimony before Congress this week that there might very well be a need to continue to raise interest rates yet again to bring inflation to a manageable two percent as opposed to the current six percent. The inflation rate is one of the main drivers in raising workers' wages in order for companies as well as school districts to remain competitive in a very tight job market. Workers' wages are at an unprecedented rate that we have not seen since the nineteen eighties. Having started working in nineteen seventy-nine at two dollars and sixty-five cents in Lower Camden County Regional High School District Number One as a summer maintenance helper, I could never have dreamed that the minimum wage today would be almost fifteen dollars an hour. Of course, everything is relative. Gas at the time was eighty-nine cents a gallon. Rising interest rates make home and bar buying, student loans, as well as credit cards more expensive. The members of the Winslow Township Education Association are facing the same issues everyone in society is facing. The W T A feels that it's time to put this contract to rest for the next three years. The officers and the executive committee members are here to encourage the Board of Education to continue to make the effort with the association. On Monday, my classes, including my A P government class that Janaya is a member of, took part in voter registration forum with the personnel from the Camden County Board of Elections as well as Winslow Township Mayor Marie Lawrence. In attempting to encourage my students to ask questions, I asked Mayor Lawrence about the services that the Winslow Township Municipal Government provides in order to give my A P government students an understanding of the community they live in. One of the things Mayor Lawrence talked about was the level of cooperation between Winslow Township and the Winslow Township School District. Even though we sit on opposite sides of the labor management table, it is our sincere hope we can find a similar level of cooperation. Our next mediation session is tomorrow, March ninth, with the state mediator. It is our sincere hope that we can walk away from that session with an agreement that is fair to both parties while taking in consideration the realities of the inflationary period we live in. Just as our buttons say that we are wearing tonight, no contract, still working, always caring. Thank you, as always, for this opportunity to address the Winslow Township Board of Education. Um, Janaya is not here, so she can't grade me.
I'm here.
But Howard, you are here. And Howard, you might finally get an answer to the question that you asked me at the beginning of negotiations. When are you leaving? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Renn.
It's always a pleasure, Mr. Renn.
Always a pleasure.
While we may have our disagreements, board, the negotiations have been extremely cordial, and I appreciate the respect that the negotiating team has received from the W T E A membership. And it's right back at them. We appreciate the respect, the negotiations, and the cordial nature of the negotiations. And I'm very optimistic that we can get something done.
I'm glad to hear that, Mr. Renn. Again, thank you, Mr. Renn. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I appreciate it.
I believe the other two that have signed up crossed the names off.
Oh, okay. Well, sorry, there again to that? No, okay. Joe, go on.
Actually, I'm listening right now.
Oh, okay. All right, so there is no other?
Nobody's in the meeting.
None at this time, no.
So that's the rule that they're trying to?
So at this time, board members, I'm asking for a motion to adjourn our public comment session.
Motion to adjourn public comments.
Second.
Move by Ms. Niavitz, second by Ms. Moore. All in favor?
Aye.
Any names? Thank you.
Ms. Long?
Thank you, Madam President. At this point in time, in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, we will be adjouring into an executive session commencing on March eighth, twenty twenty-three, at seven forty-five P M. Of the nine exceptions, we will be utilizing item seven, matters falling within the attorney-client privilege on an issue that I need to discuss with the board of a legal matter. The other is matters involving personnel, pending personnel matter and litigation. That would be actually number, digit number eight in this circumstance. So we need to discuss that matter as well. I would anticipate the executive session is estimated to last approximately sixty minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Boil.
There may be actions needed coming out of executive session, Madam President.
There may be action?
There may be, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Therefore, board members, at this time, I'm asking for a motion.
Motion to adjourn into executive session.
Second.
Move by Ms. Niavitz, second by Ms. Moore. Roll call, please.
Ms. Drennan?
Yes.
Ms. Esposito?
Yes.
Ms. Esposito?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Niavitz?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
And Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
The motion has carried.
Thank you. Well, therefore, we are going to adjourn to executive session.